I have to, as a budget officer by state statute, give you a budget by May the 30th. So we're going to take all this information, and I know that changed up our timeline, but House Bill 801 kind of changed things up for everybody. Did that answer your question?
Yes.
I heard you say public input for the budget. Are we going to put public input for these services to see what the citizen really wants to look at?
I mean, that would be on the table for y'all. I'm just going to present you our recommendations, and then you can schedule a public hearing. It's really y'all's pleasure what you want to do. We have to get to the point where we have a recommendation, Mr. Doggett, and that's where I'm trying to get y'all, too, in light of House Bill 801.
I have one more follow-up question on the duck tailing on what you said. In order to get the information so the public understands what House Bill 801 is, will there be time to schedule? I don't want to throw a number because that would be the number, but so that we can get some citizen input or at least let them know what's going on, what the General Assembly is saying, and what this bill actually means, and kind of our understanding as to what the timeline is for it because it's a study. And then after the study in 2026, we'll know more formally.
Absolutely. I mean, y'all could have as many meetings as you want. By state statute, I have to get you a budget. Then you could have as many meetings you want. We have to have a 10-day public hearing announced before y'all adopt it by June 30th. So we could be literally every day after May 27th if that's y'all's pleasure until we feel like we've got enough public input and y'all have enough information to formally adopt an annual budget.
Okay.
So it's not a one-and-done. I mean, we've got to have a public hearing, but I think we need to have some citizen input between the time I present it and that actual public hearing.
Yes.
And that's, but not only publicly, but individually to you and your constituents.
And John Doggett, if you have any ideas of or meetings that you would like to have with the citizens for public input, do let us know.
The drill is, I know it's an hour rate, 250 an hour for Mr. John Doggett. Is that remote? Is that on time? What's your discussion? What's the able?
It's going to be a little bit of both.
A little bit hybrid?
Got it.
Any further discussion on Item C, discussion of the proposed 2025-26 annual budget?
Is hybrid negotiable?
What would you want? Would you want him to come in and work the whole time? Or you don't want him to come in?
No, if he's not, if he's here, going to the 250, if he was going to be remote. I don't know. I was just asking.
I don't feel like he needs me. I think if he needs to do computer work or sit on his computer and put together the matrix and stuff, I don't mind if he's...
I will withdraw the question.
I'm sorry. I said I would withdraw my question.
Thank you.
I appreciate you. I was trying to get the rest of the... Any other discussion on Item C?
So do we need the... One second.
But we have to, I have to as a budget officer by state statute give you a budget by May the 30th. So we're going to take all this information and I know that changed up our timeline, but House Bill 801 kind of changed things up for everybody. Did that answer your question?
Yes.
I heard you say public input for the budget. Are we going to put public input for these services to see what citizens really want to look at?
I mean, that would be on the table for y'all. I'm just going to present you our recommendations and then you can schedule a public hearing. You can, it's really y'all's pleasure what you want to do. We have to get to the point where we have a recommendation, Mr. Doggett, and that's where we're, I'm trying to get y'all too in light of House Bill 801. So.
I have one more follow-up question kind of detailing on what you said. In order to get the information so the public understands what House Bill 801 is, will there be time to schedules? I don't want to throw a number because that would be the number, but so that we can get some citizen input or at least let them know what's going on, what the General Assembly is saying and what this bill actually means and kind of our understanding as to what the timeline is for it because it's a study. And then after the study in 2026, we'll know more formally.
Absolutely. I mean, y'all could have as many meetings as you want. We have, by state statute, I have to get you a budget. Then you could have as many meetings you want. We have to have a 10-day public hearing announced before y'all adopt it by June 30th. So we could be literally every day after May 27th if that's y'all's pleasure until we feel like we've got enough public input and y'all have enough information to formally adopt an annual budget.
Okay.
So it's not a one and done. I mean, we've got to have a public hearing, but I think we need to have some citizen input between the time I present it and that actual public hearing.
Yes.
And that's, but not only publicly, but you know, individually to you and your constituents.
And John Doggett, if you have any ideas of or meetings that you would like to have with the citizens for public input, do let us know.
The town's hour rate is 250 an hour for Mr. Joiner. Is that remote? Is that online? What has your discussion been? Was he able?
It's going to be a little bit of both.
A little bit hybrid? Okay.
Any further discussion on item C, discussion of the proposed 2025-26 annual budget?
Is hybrid negotiable?
What would you want? Why, would you want him to come in and work the whole time? Or you don't want him to come in?
No, if he's not, if he's here, going to the 250, if he was going to be remote. I don't know. I was asking.
I think if he needs to do computer work or sit on his computer and put together the matrix and stuff, I don't mind if he's.
I withdraw the question. Could you all speak more?
I'm sorry. I said I would withdraw my question. Then.
I appreciate you all trying to get the rest of the.
Any other, any other discussion on item C?
So do we need to, one second. You said item C?
Yeah, that's the item that we're on.
Got you. Okay. No, I have nothing else like that.
Anyone else?
One more.
Because I know we're talking a lot about the hiring for Joiner.
Well, I understand how item D impacts item C, but we haven't adopted agenda and we really need to stick to that. But D's not going anywhere. We all understand the impact that we'll have on C, but we have to go it into order. Great.
This has to do with.
Thank you.
So in trying to digest the fee schedule, and I know we talked about that in our workshop, are we able to see a cost analysis of what some of the actual items are? For instance, if we have to do a turf this bag and it rains all day and we have to put 50 on the field, do we know they cost $5 apiece, $10 or $20 so that we could at least get that money back? Are there, are there some things like that that you could help us out with where we can look at the fees and some of the things is the actual legitimate cost to us?
Absolutely. We're, I've had this discussion with councilman Clay. We're going to do our best with the staff time we have left to give you a cost analysis.
Yes.
As much as possible for each one of those things and what it costs and we'll get as close as we can.
That's very fair.
So that way y'all can make an informed decision. Again, it will be in the recommended budget.
Yes.
And again, y'all have the right to channel, to change it, whatever, lower, upper, whatever your pleasure is. And certainly you want to get public input. That is certainly understandable and expected.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Here we go. We'll move on to item D. This is a fresh topic. We had a discussion previously this evening. Does anyone have any discussion or would anyone like to make a motion on item 9D?
I'd like to make a motion to pursue the proposal agreement with Jason Joiner, consulting services for the service metric development and government strategy with an hourly rate of 250 an hour.
I'll second.
Have a motion and second. Discussion.
Would you amend?
Yes, sir, please, Mr. Mayor. And authorize me to execute that agreement, the town manager, on y'all's behalf.
May I like to amend my earlier motion to include authorizing our town attorney to rawls to.
Town manager?
Sorry, town manager to authorize to sign this agreement.
Did you get that? Thank you.
That good? Okay, we have a motion. Still second?
Yes, sir.
Have a motion and second. Further discussion. Here we go. We'll call a question. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed? Item 9E, approval of audit contract for fiscal year 2024-2025.
Mr. Rawls?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Every year, the governing body must authorize a contract to pick an independent auditor to independently audit the town's finances. Mr. Brewer did ours last year at a very, very reasonable rate. And so he has put forth a renewal contract basically to do another year for the town. And I recommend that the board consider contracting with him for the 24-25 audit, which will, he'll start.
For how much? Could you just tell us the amount that you're requesting?
10,000? Thanks. Discussion or would someone like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion that we approve Tony Brewer CPA, PC to be our auditor again for the 24-25 year in the amount of $10,000. Does it say the year, Charlie?
25-26?
24-25.
24-25.
24-25. You said it right.
Okay, and in the amount of $10,000.
Have a motion. Wait, is there more?
Well, I didn't know. I think I said renewal contract.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Further discussion.
10,000?
Oh, yeah.
10,000?
Further discussion. We'll call a question. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is unanimous. Item number 10, manager and council reports, updates, and comments. Open floor to anyone. Mr. Manager?
I'll start and you know, it's a pleasure to walk over here. They're pulling up the project spreadsheet as soon as this gets live over here. So last month, we started with the project dashboard. And what this is, is gives you as a governing body and the public a snapshot of where our projects are. I can tell you all of our projects are moving ahead. And we have the comments here in a minute.
Why wasn't this in our deck?
It's okay. Take a moment and we'll make it a little clearer. Need to lower the height. I can't even tell what key.
I think it was better before.
Yeah, it was.
It was a little bit more clear.
Can you move it to the left? So I can see what project is. I can't pan. Can you pan? I don't know how to do this. Okay, so where is the picture of the welcome sign?
It's next to it.
So talk to that. I saw a sign one time that says the air is getting really foul. Things updates the computer. And I guess that's really great here.
And the town clerk.
Will the lens on the projector slide out and back or is it locked?
Can you just reiterate the next question?
Let me try it a different way.
Okay. Sorry. So I'll just do a.
Wouldn't it be helpful where you have the printout?
Mr. Dunn, please refrain from making comments.
I'll start with Bandera. We are now at 90% completion. And we've started applying for permits for.
Completion, completion of.
Of the engineering documents and going to construction documents.
Thank you.
We're 90%. We've started applying for permits. In fact, I authorized the invoice payment permit last week on that project. We're still on timeline to go to bid sometime in July with the Bandera project and it's moving ahead. Several of you have asked about the value engineering, what things were value engineered out, approximately how much was it? We don't know the exact number until we actually go to construction bidding, but right now it's around $1.1 million was value engineered down from the original scope of the project. And that was taken out the bathroom over at the equestrian side of the park. However, we put in the plumbing, the water supply over there with the anticipation of utilization is high, adding that second bathroom to the facility. We took out a lot of the paving in the project, especially on the equestrian side, made it gravel. We also went from a custom-built bathroom and recreational facility to a prefab, which actually looks better and is less expensive. Some trees and shrubs. One of the things that they had in there were $2,000 parts benches. They had trash cans and those types of things. And so we value engineered that out to get down to where we're at. So that project is moving well along. The water tank and lines were at 75% on the engineering. We just passed the State Historic Observation Office. They've signed off on everything. And that is looking to go to bid also in late July. So A and Y Greenway is moving forward. We're at 75% with that also in the engineering. And there, we're doing all the DOT approvals between now and July. And the right-of-way company will start contacting the homeowners officially and making offers for those necessary easements that are needed. To the welcome sign, we were able to get it designed by a design company to DOT standards so it can go on the DOT right-of-way. DOT standards are that it has to be breakaway. If you really look at metal signs out there, they have a breakaway feature to them out there. And so we had to design our signs to look like what had been approved color and aesthetically, but also that it had to be breakaway. So we've gotten that design. We've sent it to DOT as of last week and waiting for their final thumbs up. Latest email I got was where do we want to put these signs exactly? We've identified some potential sites. And so we've got to send back, get zeroed that in for them because of wind loads was the email that I was copying on today. So that's moving forward. I will also note that kudos to the finance officer on Bandera and on the water. We had some things we had paid and we submitted for reimbursement through our program. The ARPA grant through the county, we got a check for $779,000 last week. That's been deposited in our account. It's being transferred over into our investment account. Money's always better in our hands drawing interest than there, especially when you're talking about three quarters of a million dollars. So that is the updates. I had a picture of the sign for y'all, but we're having technical difficulties. We can see it on here, but I was hoping to show it to you all in the public. But it looks according to the MeritPro 10 and other people on the committee. It looks like what y'all have approved and designed.
Maybe we can put that picture on Facebook page or town website or something?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So sorry for the technical difficulties. We had everything lined up. And we had notes on the project dashboard, but we can't get it up on, I'll make sure that.
Can you check and see how expensive a new render in a Bandera would be to show you the bathroom layout?
Yes, sir.
Just see, can you repeat the question?
Just see how, see how expensive it would be to get a new render in a Bandera? Because I don't know if everybody has seen exactly what's been moved citizen-wise.
A rendering with the bathroom as it looks.
Or a site plan.
Or will look. That has, that has to exist if you're going to do it.
Well, it has to.
I also had a call today with Piedmont Land Conservancy and our state contact applying for extensions on our part of grant and on our LWCF grant. We're getting close to that exploration. We have to apply for an extension. They don't feel like it's going to be a problem at all because we now have the project really moving. In the last six months, we've gone from below 50% to above 90% with Bandera. We also have not heard yet on the $500,000 grant application that we worked on earlier this year. We're supposed to hear sometime in June. So hopefully we'll get that. We can add that to Bandera. And that will lessen the amount that's going to come out of our fund balance to pay the difference between the grants and actual cost of the project. Question is about my report.
Thank you, Mr. Rawls. Anyone else?
I'll just say that given the comments today, it reminds me that I'd really like to see a summer film newsletter at some point to help with getting information out there, some town halls. I think we really should focus on this sometime soon. I think it'd be great to get more information out to the folks because as I hear things, it doesn't always reflect what's actually going on or what actually happened. And I think those newsletter would help with that and town halls where we can actively engage with folks and impart upon them, you know, our experience. I think it'd be great to do that.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, citizens and council members, I want to take a moment to say how excited I am about the progress we're making on several important projects, Bandera Farms Park, A and Y Greenway, Water Tower, and G D A Comp Plan. I want to emphasize that I am committed in doing what is best for our town. As a part of that commitment, I refrain from engaging in personal attacks against citizens or my fellow council members. When we resort to such behavior, we only create a deeper divide within our community and a more, and add more validation to the HB 801. As an official, I respect citizens' rights to express their dissatisfaction with us. However, I have no respect for council members who attack or ridicule citizens for their opinions, nor for council members who do the same to one another. I feel fortunate to live in this wonderful community surrounded by family and friends who stand by me. Please, but please understand I cannot control what my family and friends may say or do, but it isn't the essence of being a small town to represent our differences while finding common ground and working together on goals that will best serve our community. I'm urging everyone to end the attacks and collaborate to overcome the challenges the General Assembly has presented us. Let's respect our differences and agree to focus on how we can emerge from this situation and strong the community. Please, let's stop now the backhanded digs, lack of transparency, and endless verbal disputes that are giving us nowhere except to increase the risk of losing our charter. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Doggett. Anyone else?
I'll just say I agree for the most part, but I do believe that sometimes there are political factions here in the town that don't always have the best interest of even our citizens really. And, you know, it concerns me sometimes when these political factions bully our citizens, but that's it.
Anyone else?
I think it would be great if the Facebook pages did the same, not just everybody. But I think it would be important to point out that.
Totally agree.
You agree with that?
I agree with that.
Cool.
I don't agree attacking citizens as a council member and I don't agree with attacking other councilmen as a council member.
Any other manager, council report, or update, or comment? If none, I'll ask if anyone would like to make a motion to move to closed session.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion to move to closed session to consult with an attorney employed or obtained by a public body on confidential matters in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege as provided under NCGS 143-318.11A3, A5, and A6.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Folks will be back as soon as you can. Thank you.